Testing one, two.
Test, test. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Guyman City Council. At this time, I'd like to invite Father Brashears from St. Peter, the Apostle Catholic Church, for the invocation.
Father, 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 and God's power and might, wisdom and justice, through your authority.
God of power and might, wisdom and justice, through you, authority is rightly administered, laws are enacted, and judgment is decreed. Assist with your spirit of counsel and fortitude, our mayor and the city council. May they always seek the ways of righteousness, justice, and mercy. Grant that they may be enabled by your power, your powerful protection, to lead our city with honesty and integrity. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Mr. Peterson, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this meeting to order. Item two, attendance roll call.
Livinggood?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Swager?
Here.
Alvedras?
Present.
Egger?
Here.
Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. Petty?
Here.
Mr. Dunham?
Here.
Item three, public comments and announcements.
Is the, are the phone lines open today for?
Are the phone lines open? Yeah, it is.
I know we had a delay for a minute. It's been about a minute.
Testing.
Looks like we don't have any callers. Any public comments or announcements? Okay, we'll move on. Item four, approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion and a second.
Egger?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
We've got five eyes.
Item five, discussion and possible action to authori- authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement with the Bank of the Panhandle for the lease purchase of one new center pivot system in the amount of $62,676.48.
Yes, if you remember at the last council meeting, council awarded the bid for the pivot system and then authorized me to quote out for a lease purchase agreement. We did contact all three local banks. There were two banks responding with Bank of the Panhandle being the lowest rate. At this time, I'd recommend that we authorize the mayor to sign this lease agreement. It's for five years at 3.3%. The monthly payment on that is going to be $1,134.64. And again, the term is five years.
Do we have an option to pay that off early if we so desire?
If we so desire, yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the mayor to sign a lease agreement with the Bank of the Panhandle for lease purchase of one new center pivot system in the amount of $62,676.48.
Second. I have a motion and a second.
Egger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
We've got five eyes.
Item six, discussion and possible action to approve support for Main Street Guyman funding for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Item six.
This is a carryover item from last month. It was tabled due to some questions, and I believe Ms. Johnson is here that would... Okay, no, that'll be fine.
Good evening. I'm Donna Johnson, Riffle, and I am the board chairman this year for Main Street Guyman. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity. One of the things that I would like to bring to your attention first off is that we are not asking for any additional money at this time. We are just asking for what we thought is the line item, budget item, that we voted on last year and received for the $30,000. And I'd like for you, we handed you out a report, a copy of our report. We recently took a community survey and to find out what the members are, our members, the community and the surrounding community, people that come into Guyman, what they felt was the most popular community events and services that Main Street Guyman offers. And it came out that our most popular is our community cleanup. So we went back and Melina went back and she kind of gave us some numbers on the voluntary hours that we receive off of that. In 2017, we had 3,401 volunteer hours over the year. 349 were April hours that were almost all cleanup hours. And then in September of 17, we had an additional 360 hours that were almost all cleanup hours. Again, in 2018, we had an increase. We had 3,251 volunteer hours with 612 of those in April during our big cleanup committee, cleanup push that we have in Guyman, and then 496 in September. That one, we actually worked with the Parks Department pretty close. Again, in 2019, we had a new increase, 3,321 voluntary hours, 838 of those in April, 477 in September. We also have Upward Bound that is an active youth organization training that they come in and they volunteer 600 hours. So in the last three years, we have had a total of 2,831 hours, which equals about 950 hours per year. And you know, if we put that in a dollar figure, because I know we're always having a look at budgets and dollars, that comes to $9,500 on a value on the year, just in voluntary hours, just straight if you figured it $10 an hour. We also know that the city of Guyman does, I mean, your revenue and your budget comes from sales tax and then your natural gas sales. So we'd like for you to know that as we promote our different programs, our cash mob, our lunch mob, and we also know the sales tax is collected from the vendors of our Guyman Fiesta in September. Farmer's Market also collects sales tax. So we figured roughly about $1,200 in sales tax generated in a year, just off of the Guyman, the Main Street Guyman program. Our Know Your Neighbor program is one that we have three a year, and this one helps us in getting to know our diversified community. It helps, we have speakers, we have videos to watch telling about the different cultures. This is used for, our primary goal is to build a stronger community. The teachers are using this, are beginning to use this to find out about the diversity that's coming into the classroom and how we as workers in the community, employees in the community, that we can learn to work better with our coworkers. This is the same purpose that it started with Pangaea. That one is, that cost Main Street Guyman between $4,000 and $5,000 to sponsor. Our Main Street Bucks keeps money given away as an award. We have businesses that buy Main Street Bucks and they give them out to their employer, to their employees, and that keeps that money here in town. If you give $100 to an employee, they could take that and go anywhere. If you give them $100 in Main Street Bucks, they're gonna spend that, they can only spend that with Main Street Guyman members and merchants. And then we have our Shop Small Breakfast that's held right on the Friday, the Saturday after Black Friday during the holidays. Looking at it, we think that our cash mob brings in a minimum of $2,400 in sales each year, which could be based on a $200 a month, $200 a month sale. And our lunch mob is about equal to that as we go to different businesses. We do have our goal, that is to keep our businesses vibrant and help them train their employees on how to be the best at customer service, taking care of, and maintaining the businesses. We offer, in that, we offer our Career Focus Group training, and that's a professional development course that's open to 15 people each year. I do believe we're gonna change that, am I correct, to every other year? Not the Career Focus. Okay. And just to give a little bit of background, Julianne was actually the one that inspired that and put that together to help build professional training here local instead of having to spend dollars out of town and travel out of town. That is a registration fee of $250 for each member, and right now, we would like to offer a seat at no cost to the city of Guyman for any upcoming workshops that we do have, so that they would have that available also. Also, this year, for the first time, we created a workshop in January and February titled Start Your Own Business. This has probably been one of our newest, I mean, it is our newest, but it's already, we're seeing successes out of it. We had two businesses that have been opened since that first class. Both of those new businesses are here in Guyman and have opened in the midst of COVID-19. So when the owners take this class, they are more apt to be able to make their business more successful. And this class, we actually came about because Melina was at a training herself, and this was one of those ideas that was passed out and around and discussed, that someone else had tried it and it was successful. So she came back, brought it back to the board, brought it back to the members, and then she started working on it with OPSU Dean Gavin Winger to make the plan work. We also offer free business classes each year, and because we are funded by you, the city, we feel that we can honestly tell your constituents that you, the city, are working with us to provide help to our local businesses. We know that sometimes the city council gets accused of only giving incentives to new businesses, you know, I've heard that through several years myself, and then, but Main Street Guyman does this for you because we are offering training to existing business owners, and that gives you a stronger argument if you ever come across that accusation again. We do offer board training to any other nonprofits here in the area, many of which are Guyman, Main Street Guyman members, and we help them become more proficient within their goals and meeting their needs and requirements on their nonprofits. We do have, the trainings are offered at no cost, with the exception of PH, PCHC, who have their monthly meetings to meet their grant, their grant requirements. And I was surprised to find out that this grant of over $800,000 in employee paycheck is what it maintains here in our area. We partner with many because it is smart and because it is good for our community. We as, as a group of individual volunteers have the community at heart, and we enjoy working with the city of Guyman in Business Expansion and Retention Committee. We helped her on several projects. One of those is helping with the, meet the local businesses and getting information from them. Another is that we partner with Pioneer Day Radio. We partner with the Rose Garden Club. We partner with the Outback with Iron Thunder for their five-state motorcycle run. We do, we have 10 people that, I'm sorry, let me, I digressed on the Business and Expansion and Retention Committee. We do have 10 people in our group that do volunteer to help go meet the businesses and gather the information that is needed for her for that, for Sheila. And we will, in a year without the COVID, do a minimum of 120 visits in a year. And that's where, if you do that at $10 an hour per two-hour visit, $2,400 a year that it, you know, keeps with the city. Facebook, we are finding is a surprising value provided to the Main Street Guyman. Melina posts community events, which they bring more attendees, they also, who will spend more money here in Guyman. We have more than 5,000 likes on our page, and you know, for it to be a small community that we are, that's a lot. We did find out recently that the city of Guyman had posted an announcement with some comments by the Main Street Guyman, and over 2,500 people viewed the post and more than 1,000 engagements. To get an engagement from that many people with direct mail would cost $500. Yes. Okay. That was one that we posted for the city. The city's partnership is figured by the National Main Street that it should be about one-third Main Street, one-third membership, and Melina glossed on that one, what did you? Huh? One-third city? Okay. Okay. Going by that, it would be approximately $14,000 for the director's salary in addition to one-third of the maintenance and building, utilities, buildings. Whatever I missed, Melina? In reflection of that, we would like to thank the city of Guyman, and we have thoroughly enjoyed having someone representing the city meet and be active on our board through this past year. It has been very beneficial to us, and we hope it's been beneficial to the city. You've helped us do some maintenance on the building. We've had painting done by volunteers, the roof repaired, we replaced the hot water heater, and maintain and do more programming. We really do appreciate the support that we've had over the past year from the city of Guyman, and we hope that we can, that you have felt that it's been beneficial, and we hope that we can continue with this amount, but we also know that your budget is tight, so we would be thankful for the support of whatever we do get from the city, and we hope that we can continue our partnership.
You've got funding for fiscal year 2020, 2021 on our agenda item.
Yes.
Is this funding for this year or for next year?
It's actually, you have approved it for this year because we were supposed to be on the CT right before the review for all council facilities, right before, so we missed that, and then tried to get in on the city council meeting review, the one that we're on, the corruptness, so I didn't.
Okay. So this is actually for 2020?
Yeah, so honestly, maybe some, yeah.
How come we didn't do this last fall when we were doing the budget? I thought we discussed this in the budget last...
I thought it was gonna be a line item.
Yeah, I did too.
And I think Larry Mitchell didn't get it in there as a line item. Because he kind of...
Had to go back and forth on the right. Had to go to tourism and get approved income to us and never got to them.
Never got to them, okay.
I don't know, they just called 712.
Yeah, I think it is, I think that's where the gap is.
How's that budget look, Mr. Dunham, as far as that?
Well, Convention Tourism has got a budget for $80,000 for this year. How does, how, where do we stand with that budget? Do you have any idea?
My understanding is that that, that this money is part of that $80,000.
Right. Okay. And...
It's not lined down, it's not lined item out specifically, but that's my understanding, it was part of that $80,000 that is been, that was approved during the budget, so it would still be intact at this point.
Okay.
It could be that you just wanted a report from me, I don't know.
Been a long time.
My question would be about, since, since this is funded through the hotel motel tax, mostly, how, how do we look on that with the COVID and everything else that's happened?
Honestly, I haven't looked very closely at the hotel motel tax for the last couple of months, so I can't answer that. I can put a report together and send it back, send it out to all the council members at a later date, but I can't answer that question right now. As I'll report later on, our sales tax and use tax are both coming in less than what we expected.
Thank you.
I know we earmarked $250,000 for the soccer complexes. We did it for five years, we paid two, so we still got three years to go on that.
Yes. We are current on those transfers for this year. We will still have to contend with the next couple of years during our budget process.
I think in the opening back up and getting people out though, and if the money's available, it's beneficial for Main Street Guyman.
Would, would it make sense to do a reduced cost this year? Just, a lot of the items, Melina, it doesn't look like you're gonna be able to have, like the motorcycle rally, or did they reschedule that?
No, they didn't reschedule, we just, we had a, we had a campaign up and application on it, so it's just, it's probably gonna happen next year.
You guys have an opinion on doing a reduced amount this year, like 20,000?
If, if we give you that amount, how much is that gonna hurt your budget?
You know, I want one that not worth it, honest to goodness, it's a tough year.
Yeah.
And we appreciate, yeah. The one thing we did have, the two things that have been canceled is Alvin.
Melina, what if we did 20, and when things get opened up, if you can have some events or some other things may pop up, and we could always come back and support them through this year, because it is tough, even for us.
You guys, you said that this combination would be important.
I make a motion that we approve $20,000 to support for Main Street Guyman funding for the fiscal year of 2021.
Second. I have a motion and a second.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Egger?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Item seven, discussion and possible action on the continued opening of business according to the state of Oklahoma, open up and recover safely ours plan.
Well, just to kind of open this up for discussion, today is the final day on our proclamation, and we just need to have the discussion on whether we let that lapse or whether we redo any type of renewal and what that renewal may look like, if we so choose to do it.
That'll put us in phase three, right?
Yes, sir.
Are we, I tried to look at the state today, and it looked like we were somewhere around 30 cases.
Well, when I looked, I just asked, Chief Wadley's not here to be able to be here today because he's at a large grass fire over by Hardest Seat, but there were five new cases today, and when I asked about active cases, based on the reportings that we've been looking at, we're looking at maybe 100 active cases right now, which...
In Texas County.
In Texas County, which would be down for quite a bit from where we were in the past.
I don't think we need to extend it.
No. I, I do think, as I stated in the last meeting though, if it's a city managed prerogative, if we'd like to continue to restrict access to the building and do the testing, my opinion is that, that would be your prerogative and your staff's prerogative.
And our plan to open up this building and the library would be that we would be opening back up for business. And our plan to open up this building and the library would be that we would be opening back up for business with some modifications on the 16th. The fire, for the protection of the fire staff and our emergency responders and the police staff, we would probably leave them closed to the public for a little bit longer. Don't have a firm open-up date that those buildings aren't necessarily need to be open to the public all the time like this building and the library would be. So, this building and the library would, the plan would be to open up on the 16th. Of course, we will still promote social distancing, you know, remote payments, remote bookout, you know, contactless, book checkouts and things like that. But we'll be open back up for business after that.
So, is there anything we need to, any action needs to be taken to remove the state of emergency? Or does it just fall off?
It just falls off because today was the last day. The only question I would have for you, and I think I know the answer, but, you know, we've been over the past month or so, we've been having meetings every Monday morning to discuss this. Would those still be needed?
In my opinion, no, unless you guys disagree.
I think if we need a meeting, we can call emergency.
Yeah, if something drastically changes in the next, you know, month or we have something really crazy happen, spike in cases or something, then yeah, we call a meeting.
And you meant, you meant every Monday evening, right?
Right, right. The every Monday meeting.
Because you're having Monday morning meetings too, so...
Well, that's a staff meeting, so those are gonna continue.
Thought I hadn't made one yet.
Mr. Dunham, I was called about weddings. Weddings, that actually, that option came open in phase two, if I'm not mistaken. Now that we're in phase three, that's still...
For weddings and funerals and the like, what I have recommended to churches and people is to try to respect social distancing if they can. But it's the, it's the individuals' prerogative and whether or not they go there for that. And if they don't feel safe, don't go. But if, but I'm not in any way trying to hinder a wedding and/or a funeral. I think there's a big funeral down at the, I talked to the pastor at...
Custer?
No, the Covenant Life Church.
Connection?
Connection Life Church, yeah. I'm sorry. Several times on these. Just if at all possible, we should, you know...
According to the ours plan, they are supposed to practice social distancing protocols.
Right.
So...
And that's what I'm...
That's what we fall, that's what the city of Guyman falls under.
Yeah.
So, do we need to make any kind of a motion to carry on to phase three, or is it...
I think we, I think we, once the proclamation falls off, we fall into phase three. We've been following it all along.
I'd say that and with the CDC's new found asymptomatic, it's not contagious, we move on.
So, can we just, I guess as far as social media goes, can we put something out there saying, hey, this is... I mean, I know we have links out there, but we can just say this is what we're under. We've always been under it, but now more so without the proclamation in line? You think that would be...
I can prepare a statement to be published.
Saying the proclamation's ended and we're in phase three.
Just so there's no confusion.
Right.
Thank you.
Item eight, any new business? Item nine, reports from city manager and council members?
I do not have any at this time.
I did notice that the swimming pool is being used, so, you know, that's kind of nice to see. And it looks like they're doing a pretty good job of actually social distancing. So, believe it or not, I kind of surprised when I drove by, but, so...
I don't have anything. You guys? Mr. Dunham?
Yeah, I do have a few things I'd like to discuss real quick. First of all, I would like to talk a little bit about our water situation. As you know, a couple of weeks ago, we were under, we did release a water restriction notice because of, we had five of our wells that were down at the time. And we couldn't keep up with the demand. At this time, we actually, you know, at that time, we actually contacted Seaboard and some of our other high-water users and they all stepped up and were either, you know, like Seaboard either completely shut down their operations for that weekend or reduced their operations to help us try to recover. That was a very big beneficiary, that was very beneficial for our water system. It helps us to maintain our water, our water supply to our customers, which are the citizens of Alba. Now, today, we've had another emergency that has come up. The high winds had caused power lines to slap together and short out. Thus, it took out, it took power away from over half of our water well, water well supply and we just weren't able to keep up. We did talk to Seaboard. They stepped up to a, to a, to a very, you know, very, very high. They supplied us with generators, they helped us get, get all of our wells up and running as of the last report, which was right before this meeting. All of our wells are running, but we are only, we're, four of them are operating only on generator power. So, we are still under, you know, we still need to be conserving water. I'm not ready, during the original post for this, instructed citizens to use, you know, don't do any water, don't water your yards, don't wash your cars, don't do anything other than essential cooking and essential hygiene type water usage. That I'm gonna continue on for tonight, we'll reevaluate that in the morning. If we see that there's a reason to continue that, I will want to continue that and I want to let all the citizens know, you know, we, we, we're working very diligently to keep our water system operational. For the past three weeks, we've had, our water employees have been working around the clock to keep our water system operational. We just need some help during this time for some conservation efforts to allow our tanks to recharge so we can continue to supply that water. This, these, these last three weeks have brought some things to light that show where we are lacking in a lot of areas concerning our water. And we're gonna be addressing those in the coming months and budget year. We did talk at the council, at the department head meeting on Monday. We're about six, we're entering our six-month mark for 2020. So, it's time to start thinking about 2021. And documentation will be going out no later than June 1st for department heads to start looking at and evaluating budgets for 2021. At some point in time, we'll want to try to put together a budget. I refer to it as a budget retreat. Most of the councils that I have served in the past have said, a retreat, retreat is supposed to be enjoyable and that was nowhere near what a retreat should be. So, we might have to call that a workshop because there's more work than leisure taking place. But we'll get that scheduled in the next few months. The other thing I wanted, I want to put out there so that the council understands, through this issue with the water system, we have not been able to install the water lines at the Nash Soccer Complex like we expected we were gonna be able to. It does not appear that we're going to be able to do that in the next two to four weeks. So, I'm going to be going out looking for a contractor to make that installation. The sewer beds are gonna open up on June 17th. We will want to have a special meeting on the 17th to hopefully award a bid for that contract, for that contract work. We're still looking for organization that will be able to come in and install the electrical infrastructure. Through the, just kind of some other information that we've got, I forgot this and I want to, I want to step back to it. To kind of give the council and the citizens of Guyman an understanding of where we're at on the water process and supplying water to Guyman, we have the capabilities of pumping about 6.9 million gallons a day into the water system for usage. And currently, we're using or pumping out of the water system about 6.3 million gallons a day. So, we are, we're walking a very fine line to be able to supply all the water that's needed. We're looking at our options to get that corrected. But if anything at all goes wrong, then, you know, we're hurting.
So, Don?
Yes, sir.
Can I make a suggestion on that? I visited with Mr. Ritter and Mr. Malko in the past week over some of the issues. And they said one of the things that's gone wrong in the past is the city really hasn't taken a... You know, they went after the Boys Ranch and then there was no water there. That maybe as we look at some of these solutions, we should bring the local guys who are drilling every day in the area. Because they can tell you north of the river right there, there's a lot of water. Directly south, I mean, split at the river, there's no water. And I can cover some of that more, what they told me later. But they were like, if the city's looking for wells, there's some 2,000, 3,000 gallon wells out there.
Right.
But we gotta get in the right spot and quit trying to...
And I think, I think that's gonna be something that we're gonna need to have a discussion on. I did talk to the mayor today. What we're, as a short-term solution, one of the things that I'm looking at, it doesn't, it doesn't really get us out of the woods. But if we are, if we are trying to get something in...